Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the Planning Commission for Eastline. It's July 27, 2020, and the time is 19:01, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Okay, so we're holding this meeting via video conference on Zoom. I'm gonna do a roll call if you could just say here when I call your name. Michelle Williams.
Here.
Tom Fitting. No, Tom. Rich Gordon.
Here.
Nicole Davidson.
Here.
Mary Salvatore. Nope, no, no Mary. Kirk Scott, that's me, I'm here. Brian Baumback.
Here.
And Elizabeth Allen.
Yeah, I don't see Liz.
Okay. I think.
Kirk, just note for the record that Mr. Baumback will be seated as an alternate.
Right. Yep, let the record show that Mr. Baumback is gonna be seated for tonight's meeting. And. So let's move it on. Tonight. Let's see. I'm trying to find my agenda here. Okay. So let's jump right in then, and do we have any additions to the agenda?
I have none.
None? And public delegations. Public delegations is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, issues, or concerns related to approve wetland permits and in-house proposals, or generic topics of discussion are open to comment. Agenda items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing, or in litigation may not be discussed. The members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments during the delegations. Do we have anyone here wanting to speak tonight on items that are not on the agenda?
Well, if I may ask, the Plan of Conservation and Development is on the agenda.
Does that mean that I can't speak about it? Who's speaking, please?
Can you provide your full name for the secretary so that she knows who's speaking?
My name is Doug Dubisky.
I'm sorry, can you, okay, can you please go on?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I was gonna, I just wanted to know who was speaking.
My name is Doug Dubisky, and I'm asking, since the Plan of Conservation and Development discussion is on the agenda, does that mean I cannot make a comment about it?
At this time, Mr. Chair, I would say when the matter comes up on the agenda, Mr. Dubisky was invited to have a conversation with the agency or the commission. By all means, that could happen at that time when we come up to it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you indicating that you have something you'd like to share? Mr. Dubisky?
Yes, I do have a comment about the POCD.
Can we hear, Gary, is it okay if we hear that now, or should we wait till the?
It's only a few minutes, so.
Okay. All right.
We'll be there in.
Less than five.
Less than five.
Okay, so no publications then. Moving on to reports, communications, Mr. Gashel.
I have none received.
And our zoning representative?
Zoning hasn't met in the last three to four months, so there's nothing to report on.
Okay, ex officio, Mr. Salerno.
Hi, just real quick, we have a special meeting Board of Selectmen on Wednesday to appropriate money for a pumper, fire pumper truck that is needed, and it was in the budget. And then there's also an additional appropriation for radios for the fire department at $211,000. So we're gonna be meeting on Wednesday for that and to talk about the public safety building that did not go forward through the Board of Finance. So we're gonna be talking about that in the next actions.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno.
I'm gonna be, I have another meeting at 7:30, so you may see me fall off.
Okay. Well, thank you. Subcommittees. Do we need, do we need the walkability committee on here any longer? Are we wrapped up with the work that they were doing?
I would say yes.
Do we need to take a motion to remove that?
No, I think just as the chair, as we prepare the agenda, we just don't put it on there.
Okay, can I make a, for the record, request to have that item and Mr. Famister's name removed? Please?
Yep.
And, okay, thank. Was someone trying to speak?
No.
Okay. Okay, Plan of Conservation and Development Steering Committee discussion, Ms. Williams, if you would.
Sure. We last met on Thursday to continue our work to complete a first draft of the plan. It is our intention to supply the draft to the Planning Commission at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, August 4th, at which time we will be hoping to have a vote to send it to the Board of Selectmen for their August 5th meeting, which myself and Gary will plan to attend to get that to the Board of Selectmen. Following that, there is a 60-day period where the Board of Selectmen can provide comments. And if my notes are correct, the draft will be available on the Town of Eastline website on September 28th, which will then kick off a public hearing process here at the Planning Commission prior to our deadline to file with the State of Connecticut by December 10th of this year. So more to come at our next meeting on that, but I just wanted to give a public thank you on the record to the members of the Subcommittee team who have been working very hard in this COVID world to finish the plan on time and in a way that we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Michelle. And Mr. Dubisky, if you would care to comment, we'll open the floor for a couple of minutes for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to commend the members of the the Plan of Conservation and Development Subcommittee. I've attended a number of their meetings, and I know they are working very hard to produce a quality product for the people of the town. One thing, I just recently received copies of the working drafts. I have not had a chance to go through them in depth. But I do note that they still have a provision in there that identifies specific properties as town acquisition targets, and I would ask that both the Subcommittee and the and the committee as a whole reconsider that use because it essentially puts a, makes it very hard for landowners and farmers who have preserved their land over the years while others have developed it, have developed theirs, makes it very difficult for them to develop their property as others have done. So I would ask that you reconsider that specific aspect of the current draft. And again, thank you for your opportunity, the opportunity to speak to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the Chairman section, I don't have much to say except for probably two things. Again, echoing what Michelle had said that thanks to everybody who was involved in the POCD work that has been done. It's been a lot of really, really enthusiastic work that's been done in the last little while. So it's kind of like a frenzy getting towards the end, but everybody did a really great job, and I think we're almost there. So thanks to everybody for that. The other thing that I wanted to mention is for any of the newer members of the commission, to look for something in your email in the next week, we're gonna send out a a link to the Land Use Academy website that has some general background about planning commission duties, responsibilities, and like the mechanics of how our commission is supposed to work. So I'm gonna work with town staff a little bit and try to come up with at least some links to help everybody kind of refresh themselves on what it is that we're supposed to be doing here. That's really all I had to put. Do I hear a, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from July 7?
So moved, Michelle Williams.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Rich Gordon.
Okay, any discussion about the minutes? All in favor? I think I'm gonna go down the line myself. I'm gonna say aye. Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
And was that everybody? Okay, good. Um, on to. Okay, so we're going to hear public hearing tonight. The first is an application of Jason Pazaglia for Paz for Pazaglia Construction LLC.
I'm sorry, Kirk, I think I see Liz Allen is on the.
Yes, she's an alternate. She wasn't seated at the beginning of the meeting. Do we want to seat her now?
Um, I think we have enough to go with for now, unless.
Right, you got it.
It's fine, thanks.
Sorry.
Do you want to, do you want to be seated, Liz?
No, it's fine. I have another meeting at 7:30, so I have to jump off at 7:30, so it's fine.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, so application of Jason Pazaglia for Pazaglia Construction LLC owner. Application, a waiver request from Section 23.5B of the Eastline zoning regulations for a one-lot re-subdivision of 5.29 acres of land within our 40 zoning district located at 24 Darrows Ridge Road, Eastline, Assessors Map 44.0 Lot 8-31. Mr. Gashel, if you would, read the items into the exhibits into the record.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I was gonna suggest though, because we have items A through, I believe it's, I think it's U, is it Jen?
I know, it was A through H.
A through H, which are available on the town website. If you want, I can certainly read through them, or we can just screen share website if the public wants to view them.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea.
I'd also note for the record that the legal notice was published on the, in the July 15th and July 23rd, 2020 additions of the New London Day. And it read as follows, "The Eastline Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on July 27, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom virtual meeting. Meeting instructions below to consider the following application of Jason Pazaglia for Paz and Construction LLC owner. Application and waiver request for Section 23.5B of the Eastline zoning regulations for a one-lot re-subdivision of 5.29 acres of land within the R40 zoning district located at 24 Darrows Ridge Road, Eastline, Assessors Map 44.0 Lot 8-31." I'd also note that this application was previously approved by the commission several years back. The issue sued was that the applicant failed to file the MYLARS within the 90-day window to do so upon approval. So I would note that everything from that previous application has been resubmitted to the commission for review, and there's been no changes to the plan since then. So if you have any questions, I believe the applicant is here this evening to present their application.
Just gonna interrupt if you guys don't mind. If there are any members of the public that know they want to make a comment about this public hearing, the chat box is open. You can just let me know that you think you're gonna want to comment on this application, and that way, when we get to that portion of the meeting, I can let the chairman know there's two or three people that want to make a comment. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, that's important. I appreciate. That'll make things go a little smoother.
Yep. Attorney Harris is here, I believe, to present for Jason.
That is correct.
Good evening. Proceed.
For the record, Ted Harris, 351 Main Street, Nyannick, representing the applicant this evening. As Gary mentioned, this is a re-subdivision application for one that has unfortunately failed due to failure to file the MYLARS within the requisite time. The materials that you have before you tonight are identical to the last application, which is an important factor in this hearing this evening. And in fact, it's a significant factor both for the approval of the application as well as the request or waiver that was approved the same night. There were two nights of public hearing in late 2016, and ultimately, this subdivision was approved in January of, excuse me, 2017, and unfortunately failed due to the failure to file the MYLARS. Bob Fanner is here tonight, and he will review with the commission the overall plan and summarize it for the commission. However, prior to that, there's a significant factor that I need to talk about with you tonight because it implicates the nature of your decision. And that factor relates to the fact that if there's a previously approved application, and there are no material changes in that application between now and between the current application and the prior one, then the law is such that this commission is obligated to reapprove that unless there have been a material changes in circumstances, i.e. regulatory changes, plan changes, and the like. And I submitted a case as Exhibit D called Charter Development versus Clinton. And I'd like to just read you a portion of that case because I think it's instructive for our meeting this evening. And it starts, "Administrative agencies are impotent to reverse themselves unless, one, there's a change of condition has occurred since a prior decision, or, two, other considerations materially affecting the merits of the subject matter have intervened, and no vested rights have arisen. The principle applies, however, only when the subsequent application seeks substantially the same relief as that sought in the former. It is a salutary principle of law that at least one of the two contingencies, change of condition, no other considerations materially affecting the merits of the subject have intervened, must ordinarily exist in order to justify an administrative agency in reversing itself. Otherwise, there would be no finality to the proceeding, and the first decision would be capable of change at the whim of an agency or worse through improper influence exerted on commission members." Here, we have the same plans, the same application materials. All those have been resubmitted as Gary indicated. There have been no changes in the site, hence, in my view, based on the case law, this commission cannot refuse to reapprove this application. And that, as indicated earlier, would apply both to the waiver and the subdivision approvals as well. Also, as part of the exhibits tonight, there's Exhibits ENF, which is a sign and mailings which are required by your regulations. And as I indicated, Exhibit A includes our application as well as all of our prior application materials. I also would like to note that there was a wetlands permit required for this subdivision. That permit is still active and valid, so we need not consider a new wetlands permit at this proceeding. At this point, I'd like Bob Fanner to review the plans with the commission so they become familiar with it.
To unmute him, hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I'm sorry, my laptop overheated. I had to switch to my phone. Bob Fanner from J. Robert Fanner and Associates, 37 Grand Street. This application before us, again, same application we did last time, consists of creating one new lot from one existing lot. They come in off a common shared driveway. I assume you all have the plans in front of you.
Getting there, hold on.
Yeah, can you pan down to that next page?
Trying. This one or the next one?
That's a good one there.
Okay.
So you can see there's that dark shaded area up at the top of that plan is a common driveway that comes in and services many of the existing lots in the subdivision. That's actually a private drive off of the main road, which is the cul-de-sac to the right side of that plan. Both lots will be serviced with their own driveway. The first lot comes in on the beginning of the lot, and the second lot comes in all the way at the end. Within our service by a common rain garden, part of the regulations require that we do the retention for 100-year storm. So what we've done is we constructed one common rain garden located directly on the property line that divides our two lots of the subject property. We do have arrangements for that to be done so that the two of them can coordinate that together. That will be part of their deed restrictions within their own deeds. We did have two septic systems for each lot. They're located a little lower on the lot. The houses kind of sit on a plateau that drops off from the top. Then the house sits on a plateau, then it slopes down. There's another plateau, which is where we have the septic systems. And then ultimately, another slope down to Darrows Pond. We have all those septic systems are located outside of the 100-foot buffer from the actual pond. We are a little closer to the, there's a small wetlands that runs down the side. Again, we did get our wetlands approval for that, and we also do have our Health Department approval for both of those septic systems as well. So those are all conforming and co-compliant. This, so the original subdivision was done under the cluster regulation. We're doing this obviously under this CCD. Trying to fit everything in there the best we can, but these two lots here fit into the area. It was just something we chose not to do at the original time of the subdivision. We had the extra room, so we've decided to do it now. I'd be glad to answer any questions. We do have another simplified plan that has some survey information on it. If anybody has any questions, Jen can try to get us to the right page, and I'll try to address any questions you have.
Do we want to, can we, can we see the other separate plot?
Our internet is very slow today.
So that one was, the one that just went by was just the cultural diversity. That was the wetland soils and things like that. Do you have sheet two there?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's for some reason a lag in here, and because I have so many people in the meeting, I can't see which pages are which. So hang on.
A little bit more up?
That one?
Yeah, a little more. There we go. So that's the clean survey sheet. There you go, there you stop. So there you can kind of see the two lots without all the topography on it. You can see the driveways coming in. And the rain garden sits basically that property line that's right in between the two. It's just a little easier to see the configuration a lot on this plan.
What is the, what is the waiver? What are we waiving? Is it the area to the left, the crosshatched area?
Well, no, the waiver is for the required buffer around a CCD development. Again, we're basically, you know, we're a new style cluster development in the middle of an existing cluster development. But we do have to ask for the waiver because we're not providing that 40-foot buffer around the perimeter. Because that would be required on these lots, it would be required around our entire perimeter to provide that buffer. But again, we are the same use, we're the same basically lot configurations. It's not like we jammed a million lots into this small area. They're both large lots. One lot's 1.76 acres, the other lot is 3.53 acres. So again, we just felt that the buffer requirement was not really needed in this case because the uses in the lot size and everything are such that all those buffers really are in there just because the lots are so large.
And there was a prior conservation easement as part of the original subdivision all along Darrow Pond as well, and that's along these lots as well.
So that's, that's your presentation of the project?
Yes.
Is there any discussion or any questions from the board members? Okay, so Jen, did we have any? Let's see, what do we?
I don't see anybody asking to speak. We do have some people that are in here by phone. I can unmute them and we can ask.
Yes, we should definitely open it up for a public comment.
So right now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna unmute everybody, and then you can ask if anybody would like to speak. Anybody who stays muted is because they want to be muted.
Is there any members of the public that wish to speak? I'm taking that as a no. Okay, so given that this was a prior approved, and there is some precedent here for for continuing with the decision that had been made by back in 2017. I'm feeling like we, we need to take a motion to close the public hearing.
You will. Mr. Chairman, before you do, I have a question for Attorney Harris in regards to the rain garden. I know we had a maintenance agreement for the driveway. They're gonna, this new lot will become part of that. But was there a maintenance agreement for the rain garden between the two lot owners?
Yeah, I did a draft agreement, but you would have the same condition, I presume, as the last approval. And we can submit that for your approval. I didn't want to submit it tonight because we're coming in as the application.
And that rain garden is deed restricted, right?
Correct. It would be, it would be part of the restrictions within the deeds of these two lots.
Thank you. Gary, do you have any other further comments or questions?
That was all I had.
I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I submit a motion to close.
Thank you, Rich. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you, Nicole. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye, myself. Brian was?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Rich? Nicole? Okay.
Aye.
Let the record show, we've closed the public hearing. Mr. Geisell, do you have a start on a motion?
I would just point you back to one of the exhibits. It was my memo of November 14th, 2016. Through a series of findings in regards to the waiver request. I'd be happy to go through those findings with you if you'd like. Or would you prefer just to take a look at the exhibit?
Gary, what was the date on that exhibit?
It was November 14th, 2016.
Yep, I got it. Hold on.
Mr. Chair, do we need to hold the other public hearing first?
They are in that order on the agenda, but it's up to the commission.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that that's an issue. Gary, do you think that's an issue?
No, you could act on this if you wanted to, or you could wait until you come to it again on the agenda.
Let's stick with the agenda. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, so moving on to application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., for English Harbor Asset Management LLC. Owner application for a four-lot re-subdivision of approximately 3.8.
I'm sorry, did I miss the vote on that?
They didn't have, they didn't have a vote or anything on the they just closed the public hearing. They did vote to close the public hearing.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Oh, you're, you're fine. Application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., for English Harbor Asset Management LLC. Owner application for a four-lot re-subdivision of approximately 3.8 acres of land zoned RU40 located at 20 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, East Line, assessor's map 40.0, lot 22 and 23.
Good, good to go for?
Mr. Chair? Exhibit items and the legal?
Yes, if you would, please, can you?
So the legal ad was published in the July 15th and July 23rd, 2020 additions of the day paper, and it read as follows, "The Eastline Planning Commission will hold a public hearing July 27th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. by a Zoom virtual meeting. Meeting instructions below to consider the following." It was B, application of Kristen T. Clark, P.E., for English Harbor Asset Management LLC. Owner application for a four-lot re-subdivision of approximately 3.8 plus or minus acres of land zoned RU40 located at 22 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, East Line, assessor's map 40.0, lot 22 and 23. And we had exhibit items through, it looked like A through K. Those over there, public inspection on the town website.
Chairman, may I proceed or just one, thank you. For the applicant, English Harbor Asset Management, Paul Garrity, 38 Granite Street, New London, Connecticut. There should be also in the record at this point memo dated July 25th with exhibits AA through NN. I don't know if that made it into the record or to the website, but
It did. Give me just a sec.
Sure.
N or N as in Nancy?
N as in Nancy.
Is that the right one?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. With respect to this application, I may refer to the lots as lots 19 and 21, which were the subdivision lots on there. The street lots are what is in the legal notice on that. This is a re-subdivision application on behalf of my client to re-subdivide two previously approved lots into three lots under the conservation design development. The, there are on the survey maps that you'll see four lots there, but only three are being proposed as building lots. The fourth lot is going to be conveyed to the Eastline Land Trust as part of a larger conveyance of the land behind it. Some of you may recall from the meeting a couple of weeks ago where we had the discussions regarding amending some of the easement documents or transferring those to the Eastline Land Trust. So this is that parcel in the front of what is going to the Eastline Land Trust. In looking or in reviewing the proposed lots, we met with the Inland Wetlands Commission and did a site walk on that, on the property. Nothing on the property is within the upland review area or nothing that's proposed for development on the property is within the upland review area. And the Inland Wetlands Commission should have issued to you a letter declining jurisdiction on that. They did at their hearing decline jurisdiction because there's no activity within the wetlands or the upland review area. However, we did take some comments that they had to heart in terms of some design changes which shift. So the water on the property with the three proposed lots all drains down towards the rain garden that's been shown on here. And if you look at Jen, it's page three of the conservation design development.
Is it in this exhibit or is it actually on the plan set?
It's on the plans that were submitted.
Okay. And you said page three?
Correct. That would be it. Thanks, yep. So the houses are substantially far from the boundary lines on that. We meet all the setback requirements and all the other zoning requirements for the property. The rain garden is down at the low point in the property, and the surface runoff, or excuse me, the roof runoff is being directed by a series of leaders into the rain garden. As you're aware, the rain garden would fill up during a rain event, but then dry out afterwards so that it's not wet on a continual basis. And we've diverted all the water away from any of the wetlands. The buildings and their locations are set so that they are at a gradient that sort of on the watershed between the inland wetlands that are down to the, would be the west of the, southwest of the property. The buildings are all on the northeast side of it so that all the water drains away from the wetlands. And as I indicated, we are having, we would have a conservation easement over the area that includes the upland review area. I'd also like to point out too that this design actually reduces the amount of the impervious surface on the properties by about 44%. It would have, instead of having two separate driveways, it would have one joint driveway shared between the three parties. We have proposed a maintenance agreement for the driveways so that, and that's actually required by statute now to have that so all the owners are aware of what their obligations are relative to the driveway. But by doing that, we were able to decrease the amount of impervious surface on the property substantially. It also leaves an area, a buffer of 25 feet on either side of the driveway area for the property, excuse me, not 25 feet, but approximately 15 feet on either side so that that's, would be a grass area. In addition, the area up in the upper right, I want to point at it, but I'm sure you obviously can't see me pointing, which is to be conveyed to the land trust, sits directly behind one of the Butters properties. There is a note in the letter that I understand was submitted to the commission this past week regarding that. If I could address that issue and some of the other comments in the letter, one of the, the original proposed development had that area being blasted out and a house being placed up there. So this actually reduces what was previously approved in terms of the proximity to that and the need for blasting in that area. In the letter that the neighbors submitted, there's some questions to why this was done in so many particular phases. A little bit of history is required. This goes back to 2002 when it was a 54-lot subdivision that was on Kensington Drive and Darrell's Road. The, at the time, Inland Wetlands had approved it, but both the town planner, the then-town planner and the sanitarian decided that it would be best to do this in phases. And that's why you see us coming in at this point in time. And this is the third phase, I believe it is. I wasn't involved in the original part of it, but we, fifth phase, excuse me. We are here tonight seeking to make this amendment to that. The other issues I wanted to address in the neighbor's letter is statement about Ms. Clark and having potential conflict of interest because she is a member of English Harbor Management, and she's also a professional engineer who's done work on behalf of her entity. And really, you know, she's a professional engineer. Her work is being reviewed by other engineers, including Ledge Light. And we have done everything by the book. She's licensed, and obviously, she's not going to put her license at risk by stating something, or her reputation, by stating something that would be inaccurate or untrue. And, you know, I don't think that there's any conflict of interest here. We've got rules and regulations to follow, and we've been doing so. So I'm somewhat taken aback by someone casting aspersions on that. In fact, if you were to do that, you say anybody in the process, I'm paid by my clients to do this. This is what I do for a living. Does that create a conflict of interest? I think the answer is no. We all try and play by the rules. I addressed the issue of the house location, but it's on exhibit KK, which was submitted. That is one of the maps in the July 25th memorandum that would show you the exact location of the house that was previously approved. The new proposal reduces that, as I indicated. There's some issue as to whether or not these houses or as proposed would be consistent or in harmony with the current development that's out there. And I think the answer to that is yes. It's being done by one of the same developers. Mr. Fazaglia is going to be buying these lots and building the homes. He's built a number of other homes out there already. But, you know, in fairness to my clients, the, everybody who purchased a lot in this subdivision took with full notice of the declaration and covenants that are out there that indicated that there might be changes down the road, that the developers would be able to retain those rights to make changes over time. And this is a process that's gone on for some 20 years. So for them to suggest that there shouldn't be any re-subdivision or any changes to the subdivision itself, just simply, I don't think it's credible in terms of a complaint. It's really, these lots have been undeveloped for a substantial period of time, and now nobody, people want to remain them or want them to remain that way. So I don't think that there's anything there in that argument, but I felt the need to address it for that reason because we oftentimes, and this is what I've seen over the years, is people like what they see, but they're, they, when things don't change, they tend to like to keep them that way, even though there's no reasonable basis to rely upon that. The other issue is in terms of the stormwater management on this. Because we have reduced the impervious surface and we've put in the rain garden, we've reduced substantially the stormwater runoff on the property. And it's, as I noted earlier, it's directed all to the rain garden so that when we do have a rain event, we will be able to contain what water there is there. Looking at my notes here as we go through. So each of the lots being excess of 40,000 square feet in size. We're adding, as I indicated, we're adding the open space. We adopted the requirements of the inland wetlands, even though they didn't have jurisdiction. As I said, we try and work with the town whenever we can. There isn't a sewage disposal report because there's onsite septic here. And if the original stormwater management plan and what we submitted to the wetlands, we had originally approximately 6,900 square feet, 18,000 square feet of coverage. That's been reduced to 14,000 square feet of coverage between the driveway and the three houses on there. So even though we're adding an additional lot to this, we've decreased the overall coverage with that. And we have, should be in that, in your record, the indication from the land trust that they're going to accept that additional parcel that we would add to the other land that's already being transferred to the land trust. I don't know if there are any other questions by the commission. We are awaiting confirmation from Ledge Light in writing that they have approved septic designs. Those were submitted to them. There was some delay in getting that done only because they wanted a stamped copy of the plan. We had submitted drafts to them in case they had any comments or changes, but that has been done.
So looking at this map right here that's up now, there's a, a body of, there's like a round, roundish amoeba-shaped thing that goes right up to the corner of where the proposed house is. What is that area there?
I think
Around the inside and then it's
There's this ledge.
Yeah, that, that's the ledge area. And the house is off to the left. There might, you know, depending exactly where the developer puts it, because these are, obviously, these are conceptual in the sense that we have to be able to demonstrate to you that it is feasible to do all this, and we've demonstrated that. It might be that the developer, whoever built, my client is developer only in the sense that we do the subdivision work. We don't do the actual home construction. But if they were to move it slightly, obviously, they have to comply with any setbacks or anything like that, but they could move it so there's no blasting at all. But it does incorporate a little bit of ledge as it's laid out right now. It originally, and here I go, pointing to the screen again, it originally had been more to the easterly side of that on the ledge, and that was on exhibit KK. KK, correct.
Also, if whoever's out there speaking, if you're, if you're not being addressed by the commission, can you please mute your microphones? Because I can hear some chatter and it's kind of distracting. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Mr. Garrity, you were referencing the decrease in impervious surface, even though there will now be the three homes instead of the two. And I heard it a couple of times, so I just wanted to make sure that I have it correct. So the decrease in impervious surface by 44%, that counts the, just the decrease due to the shared driveway or the shared total impervious surface decrease with the shared driveway and the extra home?
I'm going to make sure, so, so even with the additional home, we are decreasing the impervious surface because the drive, it originally had two driveways going up to each house. So by having the reduction in the drive, by reducing the driveways to one for all three, and I may have misspoke, I said 40%, it's a reduction of 4,000 square feet, not 40%. So it's not as, I don't want it to seem as dramatic as I may have led by giving you a percentage.
That helps because I could not figure out the math when you said 44%. So 4,000 square feet is the reduced impervious surface when you have three homes and one driveway versus two homes and two driveways?
Correct.
Thank you. On, just thinking from our last agenda item, does this application include a maintenance plan for that rain garden?
Yes, and it is. Yes, and it is, it is Exhibit GG.
Thank you.
And what are the other lot sizes in this development compared with these houses? Or houses? Lot sizes?
I'm just pulling up a set of plans here, so. The- They look, I can't quite tell from that. I can't tell, Mr. Chairman, from the maps that I have in front of me.
Well, one is 1.1 acres, one is 0.93 acres, and one is 1.5 acres, I think.
Correct.
And what are the, in this, in this sub-development where this is going in, and what are the other properties? Like, do we have a sense of what the other properties have for lot sizes?
If I were just looking at this roughly, I would say rough, approximately two acres. No? Maybe less. I mean, if you were to drive in, the houses are all right up pretty much on, close to the road because the back drops off, and maybe not on the entire street, but in certain points particularly close to this lot due to a wetland. So the actual developed area of the lots is relatively small.
Thank you. Do any of the other board members have any other questions?
Um.
Rich does.
I believe there's a question about what safeguards are in place that when blasting is done, to make sure that the ledge is not fall onto the property at 26 Upper Kensington Drive?
If, well, we wouldn't have that at this point in time. My understanding, and again, we're not doing the actual development, but whoever builds the home, and presumably will be Mr. Pizaglia, has to do, as I understand, a pre-blast report. And they will have to adhere to whatever safeguards. I believe it's the fire marshal imposes on them in order to do the blasting.
That is handled by the Fire Marshal's Office, the blasting situation. Just to be clear, that is a Fire Marshal task.
Thank you.
I know that we're going to open it up for public comments that have been coming through in the chat when the commission has had the chance to ask their questions. But Jen, I was wondering, I'm not finding Exhibit GG.
It's part of one of the memos, that's why. Because it's the, it's, hold on, let me see if I can figure out where it was.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Not urgent, just wanted to see it before we close the public hearing.
I'm muted, I'm talking-
Got it, just give me one second.
Thanks, Jen.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, well, Ms. Williams was waiting. I think you were asking a question about the size of the lots to the south.
Right.
They range in size from 0.9 acres to 1.3 acres.
Okay, thank you.
There you go, Michelle.
Thank you. Can you scroll down just a bit?
Yep.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have a little bit of a lag, so sometimes I'm trying to move, and it's not going as fast as I'd like.
Does this, Gary, can you help interpret this for me about what happens if the rain garden fails? I see how it, how it's written, how it would work out, that, you know, everybody's responsible for working out a plowing agreement and things like that. But how does it cover successful drainage via the rain garden? I see it in Item 3, but I just don't understand what the-
So 3 and 4 basically, and 5 is if they, if any one of these parties fails, they're going to have to pursue litigation amongst themselves to maintain the rain garden. The town would just enforce and say, hey, you've got an approved plan that requires a rain garden. So put the rain garden, and we don't care who does it, but one of you need to do it. And then they're going to have to figure out who pays for it.
Okay.
So in terms of the rain garden being installed, the town has the enforcement ability to ensure that it's built. The question will be, by whom?
And then the town has no further say in maintenance, should?
Well, if they're failing to maintain it, each of the lots, they're equally obligated to maintain it. But if we sent them a letter and said, hey, you're failing to maintain it, obviously, at some point, we would say, okay, it's filled up with sediment, you need to go maintain it. And if they fail to do so, we continue to enforce.
Okay. Thank you for walking me through that.
If I may, too, Ms. Williams, the, the state legislature a few years back passed a statute addressing what one of your concerns is, because a lot of common driveways had no maintenance agreements or anything like that. And they say, they, it provides for parties to be able to go into court, recover their costs and expenses of litigating as well in the event that they have to enforce a common maintenance agreement.
Got it, thanks, that's good background.
You can make it, you want to make the town the third party?
Did I hear another comment? Okay. So that, sounds like that concludes your presentation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I did have, we did have, there was a letter that some of the neighbors had submitted into the record, I believe it's Exhibit J. We did advise those members, because some of them could not be here this evening, so they asked if we read this into the record. So, all right, here's Exhibit J. Says, Dear Planning Commissioner, dated July 24, 2020, the signatories of this letter are residents of Nottingham Hills Subdivision in East Lime, Connecticut. This letter is provided to convey our collective concern regarding the proposed re-subdivision of existing lots within the development. Specifically, there is a proposal before the Town Planning Commission for a four-lot re-subdivision of two lots on Upper Kensington Drive. In your letter to Ms. Kristen T. Clark, dated June 30, 2020, the lots are cited as 22 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive. In Ms. Clark's application for a determination of permitted non-regulated activity dated March 2, 2020, the lots are cited as 19 and 21 Upper Kensington Drive. A primary concern is the manner and process by which the Town of East Lime has permitted the Land Development Company to continually revise specifications or requirements for building within the subdivision. Over the past 15 years, there have been six re-subdivisions and associated changes to the requirements for developing lots and building homes. These modifications were approved by the Town of East Lime as part of, quote, phased, end quote, plans submitted by the developer, by the land developer. This information was only fully discovered after we, the residents, met with legal counsel in the hope of establishing a homeowners' association in an effort to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. Regrettably, we were denied this opportunity due to the absence of any designated, quote, common spaces, end quote, in the approved plans. During the June 8, 2020 Wetlands Commission hearing, the attorney representing the Land Development Company submitted an environmental impact assessment completed by Ms. Kristen T. Clark, P.E., specific to this assessment were details regarding the environmental impact of dividing the two existing lots into four lots and constructing a, quote, rain garden, end quote, to collect runoff from the properties. At no time was it acknowledged that Ms. Clark is related to the land developer. One might conclude that this presents a conflict of interest, and an independent assessment needs to be completed to assess any potential environmental impact. Regrettably, residents were not permitted to speak during the hearing, and these issues were not addressed. Another concern, concerning issue is with regards to the new location for House 3. Originally, during the walkthrough with the Wetlands Commission, it was stated that the ledge area was not going to be impacted. However, the latest proposal shows placement of House 3 on the ledge area. There is concern that any blasting on or near the ledge or removal or portions, of portions of the ledge, which is very soft in some areas, could cause costly damage within the property bounds of the homeowners at 26 Upper Kensington Drive. If you have the opportunity to drive through our neighborhood, you will appreciate the beautiful character and consistency we were promised when we purchased our homes. For every home, the driveway is entered directly from the street, the garages are all entered from the side, and the houses have a relatively-
Okay, Gary, you just cut out.
Did we lose him?
I think so.
Gary, we lost you.
I can hear you.
Okay, well, you're back now, so if you can start from for every home. So that second sentence of the last paragraph on page 1.
For every home, the driveway is entered directly from the street, the garages are all entered from the side, and the houses have a relatively uniform look, style, and size. These requirements were ensured in the bylaws for all new homeowners in earlier phases. We are very concerned that the proposed houses are not consistent with the design of our neighborhood. We ask that if you decide to allow this re-subdivision, that you will stipulate that the homes be built in a manner which will preserve the character and integrity of our neighborhood and keep our home values from falling. We are asking the Town of East Lime to ensure there is thorough, independent review of the proposed re-subdivision that addresses potential environmental impacts. We'd also ask that you ensure that the character and composition of our neighborhood is maintained to its fullest extent. We thank you for the opportunity to be heard and look forward to your reply. Sincerely, Tallon and Nicole Blanchard, 17 Upper Kensington Drive, Erin and Kim Bucko, 18 Upper Kensington Drive, Jeff and Tracy Hooper, 10 Upper Kensington Drive, Kevin and Justine, if I pronounced this correctly, Hickrow, 4 Kensington Drive, Brandon and Christine Stahl, 4 Upper Kensington Drive, Steve and Linda Thomas, 26 Upper Kensington Drive, Michael and Wendy Turdo, 14 Upper Kensington Drive. Thank you.
So Gary, a question for you based on that. What, what regulations would we cite if we were trying to maintain a consistent look in that neighborhood? I mean, does it, like, our subdivision regulations now? I mean, is there anything in there that would prevent those regulations or prevent these houses from meeting the subdivision regulations that you're aware of?
I'm not sure, I under, I mean, the houses themselves-
Well, there's a question, they're bringing up a concern about the houses there meeting the, you know, being consistent with the other houses in the neighborhood. So based on what our subdivision regulations are, do we have anything in there that would ensure that?
Not so much, no. You don't have a regulation that stipulates the size of the house or that it has to be a minimum square footage or a particular architectural style. Usually, those are set by the developer. They'll, when they come in to do a large subdivision, they'll come up with a standard and say, okay, each house has to meet a certain square footage. And that's really just to maintain the land value as the house gets built out from developer or builder to builder. Thinking along the lines of, say, the orchard, right? You have one builder, one developer, so they don't have to worry about that so much in terms of, you know, this builder building a different house. But for instance, in this subdivision, I think early on, the developer has some sort of restriction like that. So if I came along and I said, well, my carpenter's going to build me this house, but you have to at least follow a certain minimal square footage. So there'd also be things like you can't, you know, paint. Maybe some people get, specific with paint colors, but you can't paint your door pink or some crazy color, I don't know.
But that's not in our subdivision.
We don't have that in our subdivision. But we can hear that the lot sizes meet the minimum requirements. That's where our rigs come in. We can look at the buffers, we can look at vegetation, things like that. But architectural style, the design of the house, that's going to be up to the developer.
Mr. Chairman? Could I ask a question, Mr. Chairman, this is Brian?
Yes, please do.
So, you know, my recollections of Kensington is a nice street with fairly big lots, big houses. And I just asked a question, I'm looking at this map and I see, you know, two of the houses are going to be 35 feet apart. To me, that doesn't seem to ring true with the consistency of the neighborhood. I get the feeling that these are being jammed in there to maximize the real estate. And I can sympathize with the neighbors. If you look at the distance between the houses, it's very, it's minimal. And then I had another question about the rain garden. The purpose of the rain garden is to, to take the rainwater from these lots and divert it such that we don't have excess rainwater runoff, is that true?
Go ahead.
Just to finish, I was just looking at that first lot and looking at the topography, and I just don't see how any of the water from that lot would get to the rain garden. And I just had a final question is, as far as the wells, the sharing of the wells, that seems unusual to me. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pick apart this thing, but it just seems like we're taking a lot, we're trying to take too much out of a two-lot area and add a third lot in there. And I'm not sure, I just asked my fellow commission members if they thought that that was consistent with the POCD and the neighborhood.
What are, Gary, do you have a way of knowing what the distance between the existing houses are on that? Is that information available?
I can research that, certainly, and provide that to you. I don't, I won't have that this evening.
Yeah, just, you know, you look at a lot, lots, you know, one and two are 33 feet apart.
Mr. Chairman, let me start with the simple, there are no shared wells. I'm not sure where the commission member got that idea, but all the wells, every, by regulation, every lot has to have its own independent well, and these do. So there's no sharing of the wells. With respect to the houses themselves, the house on Lot 1 is 141 feet, where it's proposed, from the nearest property line. The house on Lot 2 is similarly situated, then the house on Lot 3, which would be the closest to any existing dwelling, which would be 26 Kensington, is 38 feet from the boundary of the land being conveyed to the land trust. And it sits, as I look at this, probably close to another 150 feet from the other residents that's there. So they are very far apart, and in terms of lots, two, one and two, the actual distance, because the house that is immediately in front of those is on the street and not towards the rear of its lot. The other item I'd like to point out is there are at least four other shared driveways in this subdivision. So that, that's, you know, I think we, a number of the houses, albeit on Kensington, the driveways come right in off the road, but it's not the entire design up there. The declaration that is recorded on the land records in which every property is subject to, requires a minimum house size. If it's a two-story, it has to be 2,600 square feet, one and a half-story, 2,600. And the design has to, any building in there has to go for review to the declaring, which is English Harbor Management. So it's not as if anything is just going to be built willy-nilly out there. I mean, there has been a consistency of design, for the most part, out there. The, I'd like to, the rain garden issue, I think the butter at 26 said, how are we going to be sure that it won't flow overflow into his yard? As I look at this, the the rain garden is at 126 feet at its lowest point. The butter's property, at one of the first topos is at 128 and that would be on the easterly side as you're facing into the lot. If we look at the topo at the, on the westerly side of the rain garden, it's lower, it's at 126. So if there's overflow, it's going back onto the developer's property into the driveway or it's not going to go towards lot 26. And and again, you know, the blasting issue, as you can see, there's, this shows that there might be some blasting, but I don't want to speak for the developer, the builder in this particular case. One would think that most builders try and minimize the amount of blasting because it's an expensive process. So if the house can be moved, they may well do that. I mean, there's no guarantee. We've just shown it there because we have to demonstrate the feasibility of it. But again, any blasting is subject to review by the fire marshal and there are pre-blasting surveys that have to be done both and then a post blasting survey so that if there is any concern about that, they're able to determine whether or not the blasting was the result of any damage to somebody else's property. Oh, and one other, one other item, just this gets back to the comments about Ms. Clark and her independence. The town, her documentation and work was submitted to the town engineer who had a list of matters that he wanted addressed, which he did. So it does get an independent review. It's not as if the town staff accepts what we submit to them at face value. It does not question it. Believe me, it gets questioned all the time. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just respond on to that, Brian.
Speaking, please.
Brian, I just wanted to respond to that, if I could. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So am I reading this right with the, where the lot, the house one and house two, 17 feet and 16 feet from the corners of the house? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the 30, 33 feet apart. I know the gentleman was saying there's a lot of room. That doesn't seem like a lot of room to me. Then the other one's just a little bit over 50 feet apart, two to three. And I was, for the well, I was referring to the well radius. I wasn't sure, you know, someone digs a well, that radius is at the radius that a well would draw from? And my point was that, you know, the well radius is overlap, that's all.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the radius is for purposes of distance from the septic system, not for where the wells draw from. So the health code, the health code requires that each well be a minimum 75 feet from any septic. So the radius is going to overlap, but it's not, it's not a function of what, where the well is drawn from. It's a function of showing it's not within septic field.
Yeah, that was just a question. I wasn't sure on that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, then it just, just in reference to that rain garden, it just seemed like lot one was gonna, you know, just dump into the the neighbors below it, but that was just my comment.
I have one more question. This is Kirk. Where is the septic for lots two and three?
Septic for lots two and three is in front, I mean, I'm looking at, for lot three, excuse me, for lot, lot two is to the rear of the property and lot three also to the rear of the property. The septic for lot one is in the front of the house. And and we had proposed as part of the approvals to ledge light, a rather technical system in order to reduce the need for the reserve area. It's a more robust system, but it's actually smaller and that's what they're looking at right now for review. One of the other points, just in terms of the homes being close to each other, Aberdeen Court, which is at the sort of southwest end of this, has a number of homes just as close and that that's all part of this subdivision. So just wanted to point that out.
Could I maybe just make one more comment? I'm just noticing this now and I apologize. It does look like the gutter drains from all three houses do feed into that, that wet area. So that would be good. I'm assuming that's what that means, right?
That's correct.
Into the rain garden. So anything coming off the house should, in theory, drain down into that rain garden. So I feel better about that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, maybe there's no other comments from the commission? Do you want to open it up maybe to the public?
Is there any further comments from the commission? Okay, so let's, let's give the public a chance to speak. Jen, do you have a list and can you coordinate that, please?
I have not actually had anybody, there's a couple of people that have commented during chat. I don't know if any of them want to speak, but they can certainly let me know now if they would like to. Either by commenting in chat or just by.
Presenting.
Yep.
Okay, for anyone speaking, please state your name and address for the record.
I would just like to speak briefly. This is Christine Stahl. I'm at 4 Upper Kensington. I guess, you know, I've heard everything that's been said and, you know, I'm not a lawyer, environmental engineer, you know, and I don't love looking at these maps. They're hard to read. I'm sure many of my neighbors feel the same way. What I think is obvious and what is frustrating to us as residents is that, you know, we all bought into this neighborhood, some more recently than others, and we all kind of bought into a certain bill of goods that I think were sold to us in kind of a bad faith way. And that's the covenants, you know, the one that says that I can't have, you know, a certain type of basketball hoop or a certain size, you know, I can have a chicken coop, but, you know, my house has to be a certain size, the driveways, all those things. You know, it's hard for residents, and this is not shocking news for any of you guys. It's hard for residents to keep track of every time their subdivision is going back before town meeting to be revised. So a lot of these changes over the years did happen unbeknownst to many people who live here. And I guess the onus is on us for not keeping up. But a couple of years ago, we did reach out to get a lawyer because our understanding is that we were enough lots had been sold that we could start managing an HOA so we could address issues that we're having in the neighborhood, like a lack of streetlights. We've got wires that stick out with no lights that we had been promised in the covenants, you know, whether or not there are going to be sidewalks. We constantly have issues with, you know, tall weeds growing into the street because of the lots either aren't finished or the open areas that aren't maintained regularly. These are things we all wanted to address to maintain the integrity of our community. And we were denied that right because so much land has been given to the, my understanding is that the land has been given over or gifted over to the town or sold to the town as open space. We don't get to maintain it and so it can't be part of what would have been an HOA for us. So as a result, we really are, you know, we've, we've bought into this, this community with all these assurances that are now gone. And we're concerned that just on the last leg of this journey of this community, we are now going to see, you know, three homes, smaller, not to the standards that we were sold, you know, be put on those lots. It, it doesn't make any sense to me why it wouldn't just be the two original homes at the size and the configuration, you know, like the rest of the homes. The fact that the septic had to be reconfigured and we have to come up with this rain garden and all these other hoops that we have to jump through is not peace of mind for the homeowners. I know you talked about a shared driveway, you know, and that sounds great when everyone gets along, but I can tell you that the shared driveway on Kensington has been a horror show for the residents that live up there. And one person always ends up paying for all the snow plowing. It's, it doesn't go smoothly. So if the rain garden doesn't go smoothly, or if the lots don't sell and it's one owner who doesn't want to pay for the rain garden, I don't know who does. Is it the town? Is it the developer? I don't know, but I do know that my neighbor who lives at 26 Upper Kensington is going to feel the brunt of that ugly, overgrown, whatever it is. So I think there are, I think there are a variety of concerns that maybe we don't have a leg to stand on, I don't know. But just as a member of this community and as a resident of Nottingham Hills, it just feels like we've been a little bit hoodwinked. And I think that's how everyone's feeling. And so I guess we're just looking to the planning committee to, you know, try to look at it through our, our, our eyes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I have anybody else for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, may I just respond then if there's no further public comment?
Yes, please.
The rain garden, so Ms. Stahl knows, is not something that we propose. It's required by the regulations. So we, you know, as I said, we designed a rain garden because the regulations require that. We think it makes sense. We don't necessarily think that it's going to be something that that is unattractive or whatever. I mean, if you go out to the site right now, lot 26 has a substantial amount of overgrown, unmaintained area, although I think it may have just been cut the other day from when I, but when I went out for the site walk and on a couple of other occasions, it, there's an area that was, is unmaintained, but it's not, that's not the developer. The other, other issue I'd like to point out too is the documents that Ms. Stahl is referring to are all on the land records. They're all part of any closing that somebody buying a lot should have had. Whether their lawyer fell down on this and advising them what the issues are, I don't know, but there's been no attempt to hoodwink anybody as to what the rights of the developer and where this could go. And it's not uncommon when you have a development, given, you know, the economy between when this got started and now has tanked twice where lots don't sell and get built out within, within a three or four year period. So, I mean, it's unfortunate that they may, they feel that way, but, but, you know, the other issue of the open space, that was required by the regulations too, to be donated to the town as part of that. So, you know, the developers comply with what they've been asked to comply with. So and we're simply trying to, you know, just move this one forward and finally point out that, you know, in terms of the the location of the houses and so forth, we meet all the zoning requirements in terms of setback, etc. So this is something that the regulations themselves contemplate in terms of what, what you could put on the property. Thank you. Oh, one final, in terms of, since we don't have the ledge light, I don't know what, what the commission's druthers are going to be tonight. If they're going to take a vote on this, it would just have to be contingent upon receiving the approval from, so any approval by the commission tonight, if you go that route, would have to be contingent upon the ledge light letter. I want to just make that clear. And the, the streetlights are, I'm looking through some of my notes here because they're not, they were not a requirement that the developer was required to do. They were supposed to be put in by the town and believe, if I recall correctly from some of the matters I handled in the past years, there's a bond posted for that with Connecticut Light and Power to install that. I don't know, Gary, if you're, can comment on that or not?
I'm familiar with it. At this point, in terms of the streetlights, I would direct the neighborhood to talk with Mr. Joe Bugaw. The town has purchased all the lighting in town, so we'll be installing them. We did call the bond on that. We, this is all part of the settlement agreement that the town had with Nyonic Real Estate and Darrows Ridge LLC and all of that. So we put street trees in, we did with that bond. So the lights, I'm not sure why the lights haven't been installed. I think there was some confusion between the town and CLNP and waiting for them. But at any rate, going forward, the town is responsible for the installation of those streetlights and at some point we will get them installed. I'll check with Joe tomorrow, at least for the public's benefit, just to kind of see where that's at. I don't know if that's helpful for the commission, the background on that. My other recommendation to the commission is being that we are short the sanitation and report and the water supply report, that we keep the public hearing open to receive that. Because if you were to close it and vote on this, I would, my suggestion would be that you couldn't predicate your decision on their approval or denial. So if you were to, say, approve the subdivision with the condition that they receive an approval from ledge light and they don't get that approval effectively, it doesn't work. So my suggestion would be leave the public hearing open, let's wait for that correspondence to enter into the record. Because as you know, once the public hearing is closed, we can't accept any other testimony. So it really limits what can be put in, but I do think my review of the application, it looks like it is complete. They have submitted all the documentation that is required. I will further review that and furnish the commission a report if the, if you, the next meeting, if you so choose, unless of course you want to close it and take action tonight.
I think tabling it would be a reasonable thing to do until we have all the documents.
That's, that's perfectly fine from our standpoint. That's, we're fine with that.
Where, where are we at for our timeline for this? Are we?
We have 35 days to conduct the public hearing now that it's opened.
Okay.
So we would just reconvene, continue the public hearing on our next regular scheduled meeting. Jen, do you know when that is again? That's going to be.
I think it's two weeks. Hold on just a second, I'll tell you.
Or, or you could, if you wanted to, you could set a special meeting as well, but if we do that, we need to at least go on the record now saying when that, you know, letting the public know when that meeting will be.
So your next regularly scheduled meeting is August 4th, which is next week.
Do you have a sense that these documents are forthcoming or is it going to be longer than that?
Oh, I can talk to ledge light. I won't know tomorrow. I don't know, maybe Mr. Garrity knows better.
We submitted some additional documents. I will try and talk with ledge light tomorrow too, but we've had to kind of prompt them a bit on a number of occasions to try and move things along. So a week might be too short, frankly.
Right. We left it on the agenda for our next meeting and they still weren't ready, then we would have the opportunity again to extend it.
To schedule it. We'd have to do a special meeting probably before the end of the month, but we could fit it in.
Yeah. That, that would seem to make the most sense. If we get it before, then that'd be great. If not, then we still have time.
I would like, I would like to do it during our regular meetings if we can, but if we can't, then I guess we'll know by our next meeting and then we can schedule it. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
I think so.
I'm just going to make a comment here to be aware that if you don't have any other items on your agenda, you will not be able to cancel that next meeting next week. You will have to actually have the meeting to open or the continued public hearing and then pick your continuation date for your special meeting.
I don't think we're canceling that one because we have P O C D.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, we need the meeting.
So let's, let's just, let's just leave it on the agenda for the fourth and we'll manage that when, when.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, then maybe take a motion to continue the public hearing to our August 4th meeting?
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to continue the public hearing until our next regular meeting.
So moved.
Michelle, thank you. Do I hear a second?
I second Nicole Davidson.
Thank you. All in favor? Myself, I, Brian.
I.
Michelle.
I.
Rich.
I.
Nicole Davidson.
I.
Okay, so moved. Okay, let the record show, we're going to continue our meeting, the public hearing at August 4th at 7:00 PM. So on to, well.
Pending, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so now we are on item A subdivision, re-subdivisions pending. Okay, so now we're back to application of Jason Exaglia for PAS and Construction LLC owner application, one lot waiver from section 2325B of the Eastline zoning regulations for one lot re-subdivision of 5.29 acres of land within the R40 zoning district located at 24 Darrows Ridge Road, Eastline Assessor's Map, 44.0 lot eight dash 31. Okay, so are we, is there any other comments or discussion from the board, from the commission? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Gary, do we have a draft resolution or what we had?
Yes.
Our motions from the last?
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe you could bring that memo up, Jen?
Yeah, just give me just a sec because I was looking at the agendas to get that date for us. Let me get back where I was. looking at the agendas to get that date for us, make it back where it was. Do you want the memo from the last application?
I have the last motion up now, if that's helpful.
That might be the better route to go.
I think that's what we're really after, right?
I'm happy to read it as a motion, um.
That would be great.
Ready to accept one. Okay, um, so I move that in light of the findings, um, that predicated the initial approval and the initial approval from the Planning Commission on January tenth, two thousand seventeen, that, um, the application and waiver request from section twenty-three point five B of the Eastline zoning regulations for a one lot resubdivision of five point two-nine acres of land within the R forty zoning district located at twenty-four Darrows Ridge Road, Eastline, Connecticut, and plans entitled Darrows Point Conservation Design Development, twenty-four Darrows Ridge Road, Eastline, Connecticut, dated August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, revised through October fourth, two thousand sixteen, prepared by J. Robert Fanner, P E L S of J. Robert Fanner and Associates, P C, thirty-seven Grand Street, Nyonic, Connecticut, which is further subject to the following administrative requirements and required modifications to the site plan and/or other materials submitted in support of this application. Item one, pursuant to section four dash four-ten of the subdivision regulations, any revisions of the approved construction must be approved by the town engineer. Such revisions shall be incorporated on an as-built construction plan. Planning Director, prior to the start of any site work, including, but not limited to clearing, grubbing, filling, and grading. Looks like there might be a typo there in the, um, minutes, so to just circle back and, and look at that when we file these minutes. Two, a conservation easement shall be extended to include the existing natural wooded buffers along both side yard property boundaries. Three, the suitable easements and deeds as applicable shall be submitted to the Director of Planning for Approval. And four, a deed restriction will be included to designate the maintenance of the retention basins. So I'm, I move that we uphold our approval under those conditions just read from the previous approval.
Do I hear a second?
I second, Rich Gordon.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Rich. Um, any further discussion?
Chair, just note, uh, on the fourth that those deed restrictions, uh, that they shall be filed on the land records. Just noting that, that was part of that approval, um, as you can see in the memo, uh, uh, on your screen now, that's upheld.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we're clear?
Yeah, I hope I read the right, right one. There were two in that, and I went with the last one.
Yeah, everything matched up. I just wanted to make sure that, that everything, but you, it didn't have the B five shall be filed on the land record, so I was not sure what you were reading from.
Is there more to this down? If you scroll down even more?
Basically, the more.
Go ahead, Gary.
Do this stuff.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was reading from the minutes. This is from your approval. Yeah, this, I, I read the wrong, yeah. You're right.
But it's all the same up until that very point.
Yes.
I think that, uh, is there anything else down there that is needed to be added?
No, I, I think Michelle's motion covered it because she said she referred to the previous approval and upholding it. So I think that in and of itself covers the whole thing, but as we're being thorough.
Yeah, no, I, I, I would agree with that. Uh, so, not hearing any further discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and hold the vote. I'm gonna say aye. Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show what the, uh, motion carries and, um, is approved. So, let's see here. All right. And then, uh, item B is the application for Chris, Kristen T. Clark, P E, for English Harbor Asset Management LLC owner application for the four lot resubdivision of approximately three point eight acres of land zoned RU forty at twenty-two and twenty-four, Upper Kensington Drive, Eastline Assessor's Map, forty point zero, lot twenty-two and twenty-three. Um, so we are going to continue that. As our.
No discussion.
Say again?
No discussion as the public hearing's been continued?
Yes, yeah, that's what I was, we're, we're continuing next time on August fourth. Zoning referrals, we have none, municipal referrals, we have none, old business? None. We had, okay, new business, none, other than carrying over the meeting, uh, public.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I could think of this before you get to adjournment is we did skip over the subdivision regs, which are under reports and subcommittees. So we could put that under like old business if you wanted. I'll take you af line on that.
Okay, um, I, I think we should still revisit that, but are, are we ready to talk about any of that tonight? Okay, I agree that we should definitely keep it on our, uh, okay, so the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Anyone? No?
I submitted a motion to adjourn, Rich Gordon.
Thank you.
I second it, Nicole Davidson.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome, Kirk.
Okay, all, any further discussion? No. All in favor? Myself, aye, Brian?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Nicole Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll, uh, catch up again on August fourth at seven.